Element in improving the quality of life and preserving and protecting public health in our state. And promoting sustainability in our way of living. Now, therefore, I Gil funds Mayor Hudson do recognize the week of August. Eighteenth through August twenty fourth, two thousand and twenty four, as water and wastewater works of Iowa we. And further extend appreciation to. To our Nick Stratton and Steve Penberly and all water and wastewater employees for the. Vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to the communities they represent. Dated this date twelfth day of August, two thousand and twenty four. Great. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, guys.
We will move into citizens' requests and oral presentation. I believe we have one tonight.
I'll actually have two. One request is.
You want to go ahead and state your name?
Oh, Manny Stojak. Yeah, for those of you that don't know, my name's Manny Stojak. Some of you know me, but those that don't, I'm the one testing the limits of canine freedom in Hudson. Requesting that we submit some kind of posting on the trail. I run my dogs three times a week on the trail. Oh, by the small gas station, I'm requesting that we put up a post. So and I'm skeptical that it'll work, but it's for people to announce themselves. And I'm out there with my dogs pretty much during the week. People don't announce themselves when they sneak up behind me. My dogs are pretty observant. But usually during the week, people don't announce themselves. And I'll turn around and there's somebody coming down on me and my dog. And I'm like, oh, goodness. And I try to get out of the way. I can even get ahead of it, but this is a request to put, you know, some kind of signage up for people to please announce themselves and coming up behind someone else. Not so much coming, they have even had it when people are coming at me. Where I'm, you know, there's a bush in the way or whatever, if people just announce themselves and coming up to a blind area.
Okay.
And the second request is, I know somebody had mentioned that we took down a lot of ash trees last last year. I would like to view that wood as an asset instead of an expense. I don't know what happens to it. But possibly cutting it and splitting it and putting it in the parks, the one next to your house. I had thought about doing it myself, but I would be willing to help out if you guys. And you guys would have to, you know, I don't want to step on any on any toes or anything. If you guys would approve it, then I would be willing to help out wherever the wood goes to split it and put it in these in the parks. Well, on term code would be to remove wifi out of those parks, you know, just to have a fire where you can no cell service. Just to get away from everything. This is where my wife would roll her eyes. She'd be like, oh, my goodness. But that's just what I would request, you know, if you guys to vote, if it's okay, acceptable, you know. I would be willing to take time up to make the woods fall enough to burn in our parks.
Yeah, thank you for your comments. So any others? Okay. We'll move on to committee reports, personnel admin committee meeting. Lori?
Okay. The meeting was called to order on July twenty second at four forty nine. And the first item of the statement was disposal of city non-real estate property policy. You might recall that this was on last. Times agenda for council, and we asked it to go back to committee for further discussion. So there were some revisions made. I think we'll probably address those at the time that we hit that on the agenda tonight, so I won't get into that. And we did recommend as a committee with a motion which carried five to nothing. To bring this back to council for approval with those changes. So that'll be on tonight. Right?
Yes.
Yes. I thought so, but I couldn't remember the whole. It was kind of a long agenda. And then the second item on our agenda was the certification raised policy amendment. Which also was asked by council to come back to committee. And so we again walked through that, made some revisions. I believe that is also on agenda tonight. And so you'll hear those revisions a little bit later. But again, we recommended that five to nothing, that we bring it back to city council for approval based on the revisions that we made. At the last one of our committee meetings, meeting adjourned at four fifty nine.
Any questions, Lori? All right, your new public hearings. We'll move into general government. The Hudson City Council maintains the right to waive the first and second readings. Of the ordinances presented and may pass the third and final reading of the same ordinance within the same council meeting. Item A. Discussion action to approve second reading ordinance nine zero seven. An ordinance amending Hudson Municipal Code, Chapter sixty one, traffic control devices by amending section sixty one point zero six. Automatic traffic enforcement, paragraph seven fines. Second. Any discussion? Roll call?
Lawson.
Hi.
Sewell.
Hi.
Reister.
No.
Wyatt.
Five.
Item B, discussion action to approve resolution three two five seven. A resolution to approve disposal of city non-real estate property policy. And. The things that we kind of, do I have a motion first and then? I'll second.
Okay. Couple of things we added was that we clarified spelled out what departments it was. Also then, when the items were up for sale. Gave the different ways that we could dispose of it so that we've got an actual procedure type of thing. Also then, as to the monetary value of them. And then also allowing for emergency disposal of the mayor to. In an emergency situation, dispose of the property.
Any discussion? Questions? Okay, roll call. Wyatt. Reister.
Sewell. Nine o'clock.
Motion carries four zero. Item C, discussion action to approve resolution three two five eight. A resolution to approve tuition pay policy. Do I have a motion to accept? So.
Second.
Just a quick thing, just. Kind of a change in policy is that now the city council will approve. Any certification classes that want to. That an employee wants to take that would result in a wage increase that we have given prior commission per for that. Also that any mandatory. Repositions for. That are required to maintain their position that those would be excluded from wage increases and that renewals. Would not be eligible for wage increases. Also, a certificate has to be turned in for the certifications within three months of their completion. And if an employee has to take a test to receive a certification, we will only pay for the test for three times after that. Would be on the employee. And I think that was some of the. Things that were changed and added, so. Discussion?
Appreciate you guys going back over that. I just think there needed to be a little bit more.
Yeah.
Can I let you down on it?
Absolutely. It's nice to have these kinds of things spelled out. Okay, roll call? Sewell.
Hi.
Lawson.
Hi.
Wyatt.
Hi.
Reister.
Hi.
All right. Motion carries four zero. Item D, discussion action to approve resolution three two five nine. A resolution approving the street finance report for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty four.
So moved.
One second. One second. Any questions? Okay. Roll call?
All right, Reister.
Hi.
Sewell.
Hi.
Lawson.
Hi.
Wyatt.
Hi.
All right, motion carries four zero. Okay, item E, discussion action to approve resolution three two six zero. A resolution for approval of road closures for the Hudson Days Committee Bean Bag Tournament on September twenty fourth. So moved. Discussion?
What day did you say that was? September twenty fourth? Twenty four?
September twenty fourth?
I thought you said fourth, the second. I'm sorry.
Oh.
I'm out. It's Monday. Sorry. Thank you.
So this is something they're using to raise money.
Yes.
Absolutely.
Okay, any other discussion?
I would just say, I'm always the one who's saying let's. Not give them gobs and gobs of money all the time.
Right.
And so I'm a fan of them raising money and doing what we can to help facilitate that besides just getting chip.
I agree. I agree. Roll call?
All right, Wyatt.
Hi.
Reister.
Hi.
Lawson.
Sewell. Hi.
All right, motion carries four zero. Okay. Thank you, guys. Item.
That was you. No, that's not you.
Oh, okay.
No, they're the next. They're the next one.
Oh, the next one. I'm all right.
Thank you, Wyatt.
Yeah. So item. F, discussion action to approve resolution three two six one, a resolution to approve the use of the upper soccer field and rec ball fields for Cedar Valley Soccer.
So moved.
Discussion?
Only question I would have is, has it been used before?
This is the first year because they've had expanded.
Okay.
Where were you previously?
That's good.
Well, what is the upper soccer field? What that is?
High school diamonds. The city of the four diamonds, which are a lot of diamonds, the high schools are too big to use. There are two soccer fields there. Lower soccer field is kind of the game field of high school. That is city on. And then there's another level, which will be a smaller field.
That's why I wore those.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that one we have, we have.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, and the one by the softball field. Now, yeah, the ball rinders, I don't get it.
Are city ball diamonds where they use them for playing football and will use inside of diamonds or their scenery also. And I think Freedom Market, they use also.
Yeah.
Stuff, I suppose, right?
Well, and you've had an increased participation numbers really up.
Why is this even coming to us?
To use.
Because it's a city property.
Right.
Okay, got it.
Yeah, we have a hundred and seventy one kids out this year.
Wow, that's awesome.
Even with this added space, we still don't have enough room for practices, so.
Is that just, that's not obvious. That's not just Hudson Kids. Where are all the kids from?
All Hudson Kids.
Hundred and seventy one kids from Hudson Kids.
Last year, I anticipate that we're twenty two, twenty three teams, and we don't have enough fields for next year. We have kids. We have first and second graders practicing. I was getting ready in October, which is gonna be dark.
How many fields do you guys need?
We would need another, maybe if you want to build another one that's by the. Softball diamonds, we would need another one of those and then at least two more that are. Which is for.
It's just a very popular sport.
Yeah, yeah.
We like, we usually have like three boys teams this year.
So.
Wow.
Which is great for.
That's fantastic.
Of.
Absolutely.
I would also say that two years ago, we did not have. A third, fourth grade girl team. We did not have a fifth, sixth grade, or seventh grade. Now we have four. Now, girls are going out as well, which I think is awesome. And and they're even like max teams, like there's max rosters on these teams. So we know this is going to be an issue. This year, but especially next year, we're really going to be out of space and we don't. We're not sure what to do. Any space that. I'll come up with.
Caitlin Park.
What's taller? Or I mean, what?
Yeah, I'm just saying, this is.
Oh, the Caitlin Park effect. I'm like, what are you saying?
I have to give it credit to the soccer teams in Hudson.
Yeah.
Make so well.
So here's the question, why is it called Cedar Valley Soccer if it's all Hudson Kids?
So we are one of the towns that participate in Cedar Valley.
Really do.
That's kind of like the.
Got it.
Yes.
Makes more sense to me.
We don't have.
Got it.
So a lot of towns actually play their games in their own towns. We do not because we don't have the space. So we actually have all of our games at the complex. We still have to practice. So we have three teams practicing together.
At one time, they were using the big lot behind Bill Coles board, I know.
I was wondering about that as well. That was the other question I have because knowing that.
His private property, so.
Oh, it's, oh, question.
We don't run them, yeah.
Well, but they'd be willing.
You can go ask them.
Yeah.
He's always been a great supporter of Hudson Athletics, so worth an ask. So roll call then?
Sewell. Hi.
Lawson.
Hi.
Reister.
Hi.
Wyatt.
Hi.
All right, motion carries four zero. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for answering questions, too.
Thank you. Okay, item G, discussion action to approve resolution three two six two, a resolution setting wages for police officer of the city of Hudson, Iowa. For the fiscal year two thousand and twenty four. To two thousand and twenty five, and this is for Officer Paul. And we just had a miscalculation on the wages as of July first, and so we need to go back and then his wage will then be twenty nine oh two.
So moved.
Second. Discussion? Okay, roll call?
Reister.
Hi.
Wyatt.
Hi.
Sewell.
Hi.
Lawson.
Hi.
All right, motion carries four zero. Okay, item H, discussion action to approve resolution three two six three, a resolution setting a public hearing regarding annexation. And this is for Kurt and Jennifer Babers, and the public hearing will be set for September ninth. And so do I have a motion? So moved.
Second.
Clear, whatever.
Okay.
Yeah, you already did this, but we had to correct the legal description. So that's why you're doing it again.
Got it.
Roll call then?
Sewell. Hi.
Right. Reister.
Hi.
Wyatt.
Hi.
Lawson.
Hi.
Motion carries four zero. Okay. Item I, discussion action to approve resolution three two six four, a resolution setting a public hearing regarding annexations. That's for the powers. And again, the public hearing will be on September ninth, and Chrissy also sent out another corrected legal description.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Discussion?
Do we know what they're looking to do with that annexation?
Uh, for the powers?
Yeah.
They are building a, their home on that parcel.
They have a home?
They're building a new one.
Okay. Okay.
There's there's another house being built.
Gotcha.
In addition to the whole Babers development. Correct. All right, roll call? Lawson.
Hi.
Reister.
Hi.
Wyatt.
Hi.
Sewell.
Hi.
All right, motion carries four zero. Item J, discussion action to approve resolution three two six five, a resolution public hearing. For amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of Hudson, two thousand and seventeen, by amending provisions to bond requirements. And this will set a public hearing for August twenty sixth. So moved.
Second.
And this is just for setting the public hearing, but are there any questions?
Mendy provision. Okay, so. Is this something related to state?
Yeah, a lot of, most of these are going to be.
That's what I wondered. That's kind of what I was getting.
Legislation, that's what they are, but they don't have to be. Once they. Got passing.
One of the Supreme Court directives, but same diff.
Is what? I'm sorry?
No. Uh, sidewalk one is a Supreme Court case.
Oh, okay.
She has to change that. So it's not, I mean, it is state, but not exactly. It's the Supreme Court saying that's what you have to do.
All right, roll call? Wyatt.
Hi.
Sewell.
Hi.
Reister.
Hi.
Lawson.
Hi.
All right, motion carries four zero. Okay. Item K, discussion action to approve resolution three two six six. A resolution setting public hearing for amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of Hudson, Iowa, two thousand and seventeen. By adding a new section pertaining to adult establishment nuances, and that is set for August twenty sixth. Not nuances, right? Nuances, I'm sorry. Do I have a second?
Second.
You'll have. Question? It's Monday.
You're retired. You don't know.
All right, roll call? Wyatt.
Hi.
Lawson.
Hi.
Reister.
Hi.
Sewell.
Hi.
Motion carries four zero. Okay. Item L, discussion action to approve resolution three two six seven, a resolution setting public hearing for amending the Code of Ordinances of the City. Of Hudson, Iowa, two thousand and seventeen, by amending provisions pertaining to sidewalk. Liability and that's setting a public hearing for August twenty sixth.
So moved.
Second.
Chrissy. You just call her.
Oh, gosh, sorry. I will talk about this one a little bit. Supreme Court issued a case in June called the Splitter Burger case. For years here in Iowa, we've been allowed to pass on. Liability for defects in sidewalk to the abutting landowner if they didn't maintain it. The Supreme Court has now said, no, you can't do that. Because cities own sidewalks. We've owned sidewalks for years, so there there are responsibility. However, what you still can do is have your Code of Ordinances say. Abutting landowner, you're responsible to fix stuff. So if it's in front of your house and you don't properly remove the snow and ice, then abutting landowners can still be liable. But it does mean that cities have to be much more.
Visual.
cognizant of defects in existing sidewalks and start your nuisance action. If you've got a sidewalk that an owner is not taking care of and is clearly crooked and someone could wipe out on it. Then you either, as a city, can either, A, fix it yourself and pay for it yourself. That's your choose to do because you want it done faster, or you can tell them. Hey, this is a problem. You need to get it fixed. And if you don't do it on your own, then we're going to come in and fix it and assess the cost to your property. So I'm only giving this little speech because small town sidewalks are always a thing. I don't understand it. Sidewalks are wonderful things and people should enjoy sidewalks, but nobody ever wants to pay for them. So I'm I'm just saying, it's a it's a new headspace that I want my councils to get into that you have to start babysitting your sidewalks. Because they are a thing and people can sue you over tripping and falling on them. And if abutting landowners want to use them, then they should pay for them, too.
Mayors have gotten elected just on the sidewalk. In larger cities.
Okay, so there's my little, and my little, and we've got plenty that need fixed in this town.
And we, and we go about. Reaching out to the abutting property owners and says, hey, you have to fix them by code.
So, but we'll have to do it in a timely or fashion, it sounds like, a little bit more vigilant about it, yes.
What's the, what's the, I mean, we're setting up a public hearing, right?
Yep.
Yes.
Yeah, so I don't want to get into this way too far, but what is the nuisance process? Like, how long? How how long does a property owner have once we serve them notice?
As long as you want to do them.
Yeah, it's a it's a reasonable time.
Is there, is there a?
Yeah, yeah. Typically, it's thirty days is what we require.
Okay.
But it's that's reasonable.
Could it be, could it be less than thirty or no?
It could be.
It could be?
Yeah.
Okay.
But in order to get somebody, you have to, you know.
Yeah, we have to send them.
So that's something we should think about in our ordinance, too, about updating our ordinance at the same time to save the specific timeframe. No, you already have that.
Yeah.
So this, this is, she's already done your new ordinance that says, hey, by the way, this could be a nuisance thing if you don't fix your sidewalk. And then your following code section right after it says, if you don't, it's part of a nuisance procedure. So.
Yeah.
This corrects the issue with splitter burger so that you're consistent with the Supreme Court. The bigger question is, is how much do you want done by your public works department to give you some reports on what sidewalks in town really need done? How often do you do it?
We have done some work here to code enforcement.
Yeah, yeah. And and that's a goal when we. When Steve retires, that we're considering making it full time in code enforcement.
Steve and I did talk about. Our three guys, Steve Brown, and he's given a center of town down this hall.
With that one, it was reading that through the phone line. It could have very easily resulted.
And you guys did vote last meeting to spend. Twenty seven thousand dollars to start bringing our sidewalks up to eighty eight.
Good.
One, maybe so.
The pitch of. And the.
And the right material.
And have to go on for them.
Possibility.
That.
All right, any other discussion? Roll call? Reister.
Hi.
Sewell.
Hi.
Wyatt.
Hi.
Lawson.
Hi.
All right, motion carries four zero. Item N, discussion action to approve resolution three two six eight, a resolution setting public hearing for amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of Hudson, Iowa. Two thousand and seventeen, by amending provisions pertaining to publication of minutes, and that's setting the public hearing for August twenty sixth. So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call? Wyatt.
Hi.
Sewell.
Hi.
Lawson.
Hi.
Reister. All right, motion carries four zero. Item N, discussion action to approve resolution three two six nine, a resolution setting public hearing for amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of Hudson, Iowa, two thousand and seventeen. By amending provisions pertaining to fire officials' authority to cite violations. And a public hearing would be for August twenty sixth.
So moved. Second.
Discussion? Roll call? Reister.
Hi.
Lawson.
Hi.
Wyatt.
Hi.
Sewell.
Hi.
All right, motion carries four zero. Item O, discussion action to approve resolution three two seven zero. Resolution setting public hearing for amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of Hudson, Iowa, two thousand and seventeen. By amending provision pertaining to pedestrians' right of way, and that's setting the public hearing for August twenty sixth.
So moved.
Discussion?
Just wondering, what is that really?
Is is that like adopting the definitions?
Something different category?
Yes.
What the state has.
Yes.
Okay.
In your traffic codes, basically. Yeah. Just scrolling through that. And you got to yield the right of way to people that are in the pedestrian right of way. I think that's probably the obvious one. Yeah, don't don't cool pedestrians.
No points given. Okay, roll call?
Sewell.
Hi.
Reister.
Hi.
Wyatt.
Hi.
Lawson.
Hi.
All right, motion carries four zero. Okay, item P, discussion action to approve resolution three two seven one, a resolution setting public hearing for amending the Code. Of ordinances of the City of Hudson, Iowa, two thousand and seventeen, by amending provisions pertaining to operating budget preparation. And it's set for August twenty sixth.
So moved.
Discussion? This is adopting like a new timeline, is that?
Yeah, it's the new timeline that they put into effect last year.
Okay. Roll call? Lawson.
Hi.
Reister.
Hi.
Hi.
Wyatt.
Hi.
Motion carries four zero. Okay, item Q, discussion action to approve resolution three two seven two. A resolution setting public hearing for amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of Hudson, Iowa, two thousand and seventeen, by amending provisions pertaining to. Operating, operating budget preparation and that's for.
It's actually, there should be electronic meetings.
I was going to say, what's the difference between?
No.
Oh, okay.
Thirty two seventy two should be electronic.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Okay. And this one set a public hearing then for August twenty sixth. So moved.
All second.
Question?
Discussion?
Chris, this one Chrissy, I didn't get a chance to. They changed twenty one point eight because I went to the new twenty one point eight and it didn't. I I know that the the item is already issued in order basically, and you guys are already in compliance, basically saying all meetings should be able to be attended by the public via Zoom or council members.
Yeah, it's it's a hy- they now put a hybrid.
They they call it a hybrid.
They call it a hybrid.
And I saw your hybrid language, but I don't see twenty one point eight, which is the Iowa open meetings section itself referencing that.
I don't.
Okay, I'll follow up on that.
I I don't know, I just went by what they said.
Okay, cool.
So I just know very little about what they're looking for, what they're after.
Okay, cool. Again, you guys are already in compliance, so it's it's all good.
Okay. Um, any other discussion?
Roll call. Uh Wyatt.
Hi.
Sewell.
Hi.
Lawson.
Hi.
Reister.
Hi.
All right, motion carries uh four zero.
Okay, item R, discussion action to approve resolution three two seven three, a resolution approving the transfer of funds for July twenty twenty four.
So moved.
Discussion? Roll call. Uh Lawson.
Hi.
Reister.
Hi.
Wyatt.
Hi.
Sewell.
Hi.
All right, motion carries four zero.
Okay, item S, discussion possible action regarding an employment contract for the chief of police. And this was one I believe we had discussed before and then we asked um yep, to have Heather take.
Did a deeper dive and you should have gotten an email from me kind of summarizing that deeper dive.
So moved.
Did you all get so moved, meaning you want one?
Well, no, I'm just saying like if we're gonna discuss this. Yeah.
We don't have to have a motion to discuss.
Okay.
Okay, what's this possible action?
That's just her way of saying you can discuss it or you can take action on it, so it's it's agenda either way. So right now you can have a discussion and just and ask questions about it, the contract, why you wanna do it, why you don't wanna do it. What you can't do, you're not gonna do this anyways, you can't discuss this competency in public, but that's not what this issue is about. We're not talking about hungry guys, we're not talking about.
Did you say competency?
Yeah, yeah, right. We're not discussing his performance, we're not discussing his competency. We are only discussing whether or not you all want to have an employment contract with the chief of police, yay or nay. Um, that's what the purpose of it is. And I think I summarized in my email that I'll admit and I'll say this publicly in front of him, I'm not a big fan of him. I don't like employment contracts, I generally don't encourage cities to have them. They confer additional rights that can lead to additional litigation. Um, he's already protected by chapter A D F of the Iowa Code, he's already protected by the fact that he's an appointed position, which means if he's got a due process hearing that's available to him in the unlikely event that you wanted to remove him. Um, so what an employment contract does is create a contract that roughly he could sue you if he thinks you have complied with it. So it conveys additional rights, including the one that was proposed has a severance package in it of a particular timeframe, I think I put I wasn't a big fan of the length of the severance package in there. At most, but if you were to go that or down that direction, I always wanted a ninety day or not a six month. Um, so it also opens up other employees asking for them. So. Lot of fun conversation, sorry, but yeah.
Can you summarize that email for?
Can I read the email right now?
Heather, is that in northeast Iowa?
Did you not get it or do you just not read my emails because you don't like me?
Okay. Literally, it was July fourteen, so it's been a month ago.
So Heather, northeast Iowa, do you see? Where do you see this?
Uh, I can't tell you about, I he's gonna be able to recite a few others that have them, none of my cities have them. Um, I think Old Mines had them in the past, um.
Mine basically.
Nashua might have had one in the past. Yeah, no, none of my, none of mine do, um. That doesn't necessarily indicate anything other than maybe it's because I discourage them in general, I don't know, but I and I don't think this comes from. I will also say, I don't think this comes from a direction from him that's trying to do something or not feel, that's not the case at all and 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 it's also, I think, comes from a direction of a, and I think most police chiefs would tell you this when there's voting and changes and make it for council, they think that they're at risk at that point because there's voting and changes that go on. I get the concern, um, I just don't like creating another area where litigation could happen.
No.
Yeah, um.
I have to go back.
So what are we voting on right now?
We're not voting on anything.
You're not voting on anything, you're giving some dr- so I I procedurally, this was in your personnel admin committee a few months back. I do not know if they recommended it or not.
They did.
They did, so it got.
They first appear on.
It got to you all at that level and you weren't ready to even have a discussion on it, you wanted me to do this and so we did this and other stuff happened and now here we are. So you're again, you don't have to take action on it tonight, this can just be a general discussion to get a vibe on whatever his take is. Um, and if there was a direction, then it would be an action item next time. Yeah. But it does need to be kind of, his attorney has reached out to me at least to a sessions and said, hey, I know this is in your ballpark, what are we doing about it?
I mean, I'm inclined not to buck the city attorney. The re- recommendation, I mean.
Me too.
Um. But I don't know what that means for right this second.
Well, at the second, I think we could correct me Heather if I'm wrong, but we could entertain a motion not to.
Correct, you could accept a motion to not enter in, not enter into an employment contract.
Which that would take it off the table.
Correct. Completely and forever, can it be brought back up or do we table this until? Things, I mean, yeah, things can always be brought, it could always be brought back up again, I mean, obviously thirty days from now, I'd be like, seriously, but.
Typically, our policy is six months.
There you go. But it has to wait six months before it comes back up?
Yep. Or you can, you can have a motion to table it indefinitely.
And then it should be brought back up anytime.
Who?
Right.
Who on the council has had a conversation with chief about this? I have not.
I have not. That would be my thought from his attorney, not yet.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, I'd be interested to hear his side of it.
I'm with you.
Me too.
Yeah. I hear the thoughts aren't wise and what ifs.
Is this something that you would like him to do tonight or do we wanna give him?
I wasn't necessarily thinking tonight, although if that's what people wanna do, I'm willing to do that.
I mean, if the attorney's reached out, Heather, what do you think the timeframe, I know they're looking sooner than later.
They've been very patient, I would, he's he's been, they've been very patient with us, but there wasn't a.
You feel prepared to?
I'm back here trying to stir hot, I hope you guys understand that.
No, yeah.
You might, I obviously my attorney keeps on bringing up things like I I don't know where it's at. Um, this, I presented it to you guys, you what you wanna do with it? You have questions?
When I, well, so I think some of the questions that they have, I just wanna know if you're prepared to discuss that tonight or would you like to the next meeting, we put it back?
And have mine here.
Or get together in a smaller setting or?
I, whatever you guys feel comfortable.
I mean, if you're asking me, I'd like to hear it tonight, so at least maybe we can table it, you know, chew on it and swallow it and maybe bring it back at the next meeting with some ideas.
Okay. So then, can I ask a question? Are we, is that okay?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Um.
Okay, you're not talking about his competency, you're talking about his desires.
Yeah, so, so, um, as I heard Heather describe, that it gives additional things beyond what you're already covered for. Um. I guess that implies to me that you might think that there are, that you're vulnerable in some areas or that somehow this shores up. You know, so I wanna know like where's this coming uh coming from?
Well, in your mind, you know, like our, like they're they're part of the union, you know, they're they have their um protections. Um, in my position, you know, Heather brought it up that I think you guys all like me up there, eventually, um you guys are not gonna be up there forever and somebody's gonna come in and they're not gonna like me, you know, like the police department, what we do. And, um and it, or hypothetically, one officer goes out and shoots somebody, you see it on the news, everybody asks the chief to resign right away because of unclear at all. I'm just trying to, this is just a layer of protection that I I set around in my chief conference, a lot of chiefs I sat with, uh, so they, they, they're talking about theirs, so I kinda took a little piece of the and kinda put together, it's just a layer of protection for me. Um, I don't plan to go anywhere, I just I don't feel like I have the protection as one that are part of the union. And then you know, like it, I ain't gonna say an ancient community that somebody gives up there, it doesn't like me and never try everything in their power to um convince powers that be to get rid of me over speaking.
So I have considered that, by the way. So.
That's the competency thing.
I heard that.
If we were to entertain putting one into place, are there things that you're willing to negotiate on?
Yeah, yeah, I have, that's that's it.
Yeah, so what would be, that's a good question, what what would be some of your I and I haven't read through the exact word for word what it all is, but like what are what's in there, what are like, if you're to prioritize, what's in there?
It just defines my duties as as the chief, um, and you know, hypothetically, if you guys do fire review calls or something like that, I'm still in for a paper or something. I did take roles and allergies, but it's a, that's a severance, you know, you know, gives me a severance pay a couple months.
It's six months, not a couple months, let's be clear.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, you know, honestly, just he just defines my my duties as as the chief and whatnot.
Okay, ready to find?
Sorry, that heckler, heckler, that was an echo, we gotta call in, um. So is the biggest thing, the severance package?
No, it's not really, I don't like it, I actually, I feel like I'm starting a law fight that I don't wanna start or.
No, no, I I'm like Matt, what what's your what's your number one point in the contract? What what's that safety you're looking for? What's that?
That, you know, I want you guys all have confidence, not just in me and my department, but just I don't, like I said, I'm afraid I'm gonna go over or even go arrest the wrong person in town, they're gonna go around they want to be in council, they're gonna come up with an agenda. And I'm gonna be on a chopping block.
Which is hopefully why we've got five council members and not.
Yeah.
So Danny, that that could, in my mind, that could happen any day.
Again.
Um, and you know, your severance package is a severance package, you know, whether it gets you two months, one month, six months, whatever that is. I- is that the only concern you have?
Which, by the way, you have the ability to offer whether there's a employment contract or not.
Exactly, that's something that.
No, that's just, it's just put in there, and like I said, I I contacted other chiefs and I took what they had and I just kinda made into my own and I absolutely let my my attorney slash best friend look at it, just I don't wanna, outrageous.
Right.
I mean, I've seen contracts of people at city base for gym memberships and stuff, or myself and family, et cetera. So I don't wanna talk like that, it's just, I think mine's pretty basic.
So what I'm getting from this discussion, and I would, obviously, I'd like to take more time to put some teeth into it and bring back my specific questions, but truly, your biggest concern is protecting yourself in case there's an unfavorable counsel.
Yeah, cuz I've been on the bad side, not as a chief, which is as an officer, um.
Which could be the means from any of our appointed people, I mean, buyer chief, administrator.
They could face the same issue.
Which again is, which again creates a slippery slope.
Right.
I said, when you.
Do one for one, you're you're.
You're gonna do it for all.
You're gonna get asks from all of them.
There's a potential, yes.
Right. There is some provisions in here, you know, you wanted increases paid, same annual increases received by other department heads and you know, again, again, there are lots of things in here in my email that I would recommend negotiating or changing, but to your point, there's a slippery slope issue about this too.
I think, um, this is just my suggestion is that um, we go ahead and table this for the next meeting, giving people time to go in and obviously take a closer look at what the contract is.
And Heather, that was in that email on the eleventh?
Uh, fourteen. It was July sixteen.
Oh.
And the contract itself is not attached to the email.
Part of the, one of you can send out something with that again. It was on the agenda the last time.
With the contract.
Right.
Okay.
But then we asked to go back.
I can.
Thank you, she can, yeah, we can ask Chrissy to send it out again.
As long as you have it, okay.
So that everyone has.
I have another question, this may be a little bit deeper underneath all this, like and maybe we don't wanna talk about this right now or or answer this right now, but if I was just sitting here listening to this, it it at least raises the question in my mind that Danny, you wonder if there's like, wh- what is causing you to think that there would be people out to get you?
Oh.
Oh, I can, I I could answer that right now.
I can relate.
I could answer that for him right now, and any given moment that he has an interaction with the public, the response from the public may absolutely send him the impression that they are out to get him. And I don't even have to be specific with hypothetical, I can virtually guarantee you that.
Yeah.
Just by nature of the office.
Just by nature of the position.
Yeah.
Every single day, he probably comes in contact with someone who might scoff or whatever or respond negatively that makes him go, oh my God, has that person got a right to write a complaint to City Hall and complain about me and they're gonna question my abilities and I that we have become a society of whoever barks the loudest gets the response instantaneously. And we are now, sorry, I really pull it right now. Let me dial this back and not be opinionated.
Okay.
There there is, there is exposure there by his sheer office that that creates that concern. So I get where that comes from. And you also are going to, in his position, I can guarantee that you are gonna hear the five people that don't take responsibility or that were negatively impacted and not the ninety five people that have the positive interactions.
So this went through personnel, right?
Yes, and came up to council.
The recommendation out of personnel was.
To approve it.
To approve it.
I think it was, was it subject to city attorney review?
Yeah, that was when we brought it up and then we decided to.
No, I think personnel said I had to review it. They were, you, yeah, you recommended approval or recommended to city council for approval subject to the city attorney's review.
I think that's right.
So I mean.
So they wouldn't have had the benefit of what I said at all.
Okay, right. So I know we talked about negotiating what this, that, do we put him back with the personnel committee to try to fine tune that contract to come to us, do we leave it on our table to go forward in the next meeting? I mean, what's everybody's thoughts?
You have to decide as a group fundamentally if you want an employment contract first, before you even discuss negotiations, that's question A. So you better decide as a group if you even want an employment contract, question B then is, if, yeah, what does it look like?
Because, you know, once you take a look at it and you can and then, um see what you think we should be negotiating or not or so I just think it's gonna take time for you guys to take a look at this again before we. Man, I'd kinda like to see and map out, you know, pros cons, kinda, I agree, right, that makes it for you right there.
It's all personnel.
I am.
I am.
And who else?
Mike Dunlop and uh, Bob Anderson.
Since Mike's had conflict, it's a drawn from conversation on that.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I was gonna say, did he last time? I don't believe. Okay.
Yeah, I wouldn't have the look, but I don't believe.
He interrupted the contract.
He was there. He was there.
No, that, yeah, the when we.
Oh, when we talked about that, yeah, that I don't.
Yeah, true. But either way, he couldn't be involved in the next season discussions.
Nope.
He should not be, he should be accusing himself of any discussion and saying anything at that meeting about this.
Okay, so a a motion to table or a motion to what, or just nothing or what?
Put it back on next. You have an agenda, you you it's possible action, you have, your choices are either I'm just gonna start with all of them in no particular order. A motion that you're not interested in an employment contract. A motion to table the issue for you to discuss it further. Or a motion to approve an employment contract and direct personnel to negotiate in regards to it.
Heather, can we limit who has employee contracts?
That's a great question. My gut answer is going to be no.